Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to record session in Goldendale City Council for August 16th, 2021. Connie, would you be able to get the roll call? You can see people on that screen.
Ellen?
Here.
Andy?
Here.
Ellie?
Here.
Oh, good. Dave?
Here.
Arnie?
Here.
I don't see Bill or Lauren's numbers on here.
Okay. We'll need a motion to excuse them. They may show up within five minutes, but that's what happened last time. Can we have a motion to excuse them?
I so approve, Mayor, of the excusing.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And moved and seconded to excuse Lauren Mager and Phil Ontiveros, council members of the city council, participating tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll go on now. We don't have a public hearing. We need a motion on the agenda and the consent agenda.
So moved. I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda. Any discussion or any questions before we call for a vote? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And Connie, if you can kind of let me know if those two members show up.
I will.
Okay. We'll go on now to Department reports from again with Chez Hansiker, our chief, please.
Well, if you wanted to pass on, we're still applying for the Department of Justice grant for body worn cameras and also comes in a package of taser from a company called Axon. We have received a body camera and taser for a 30-day trial to see if we want it along with all the docking station. We're waiting for them to get us a temporary program to where we can log into it, stuff like that. No cost. This is just, it all works. So we can test the equipment out and see if we're going for that. So we have that now. Quite complex and pretty, pretty nice stuff. So our administrative, my administrative assistant Maria Hutchins, she's putting together the final numbers for the DOT grant, DOJ grant. Because they want to break down everything instead of just one big package. So we're working on getting that from Axon. Our newest officer is at the Equivalence Academy. Today was his first day for a two-week course to get him certified at the state of Washington. He's coming along very well in the field training program and he's going to work out great. And also our Sergeant Luca Taro, he is, today was his first day in his first level supervision class, which he's doing over the computer, virtual setting. But that's all I've had.
Good. That's all you have, Chief?
That's all I have.
Okay. Steven for Goldendale Fire Department?
For the Fire Department, I didn't bring much to report. I did want to bring up that we're always looking for volunteers.
More short-handed.
And so we're always looking for somebody or anybody. I mean, someone down Monday nights.
Good. People will know volunteers are needed.
Always.
Fire Department is doing a great job staying ahead of some of the issues that come up with this dry weather. Thanks, Steven. And I understand Doug Phantom was on for Public Works Division Department. Doug?
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have a bunch to report from tonight. Mostly our lovely little thunderstorm that came through a week ago. We've been having street light issues and I, we got it fixed, or the QD did. And I believe they got hit again, so hopefully those will be back up and running soon. We've been doing asphalt work, trying to get some of the potholes and worse streets tended to. A little bit of work in the watershed. And also, it's not necessarily a report, but it's coming time to order flower seeds again for the flowers that we've been hanging in the baskets. And I know there's been a lot of discussion of keeping them or them going away. And I'd like some guidance from the council on what direction we're going to go with that because it's coming time in the next couple of weeks.
It actually wouldn't
That's about all I got.
Thank you, Doug. It actually wouldn't be a bad idea following up on what Doug just asked.
I think so, because this is a very timely thing.
I think it might be a good idea for the Budget Committee to meet and talk about those issues. Because he's going to need to know, this is the time that they order flower seeds. And then he puts them in his, Ron puts them in his shop and nurtures them and keeps, gets them up and going. So we need to let him know one way or the other early on. So I think it might be a good idea to have a Budget Committee maybe in two weeks.
I need to see if this is Phil. Phil, are you on there? It's not his number.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
Is that Phil?
Yeah.
So we could either have a week for Monday or maybe two weeks for Monday. You're on the Budget Committee.
I am.
I think you are.
Yeah.
Would next Monday be better? Or actually, it'd be better for me in two weeks.
I'll do whatever.
Yeah, it works for you two weeks. Yeah, all on the same night would be great. Actually, no, we don't have a council meeting.
We don't have a council meeting.
Oh, we don't have a council meeting.
It'll be the week from today. It'll be the fifth Monday of the month.
That works for me.
Sure.
And
Will that be enough time to get them ordered and get Doug the seeds he needs or?
It'll be enough time for us to give him an answer on what he needs or order the seeds.
So what's the date?
30th, looks like.
August 30th?
The 30th. 7 o'clock for that or?
7:00 P.M.?
Whatever's best for you guys.
That works for me.
Yeah.
What time?
7:00.
Is Phil on that committee?
Just definitely, Larry, I'll be in training and building in, I believe, that Monday.
Oh, well, then maybe we should do it the Monday before.
No, it would work better.
Quicker the better.
Okay, let's switch it to the 23rd.
Okay.
Good thing I changed this calendar.
Thanks, Doug.
Might not work this June.
I didn't want to ask for the 23rd, but that worked out really well.
I don't know. I remember who's on the Budget Committee.
I am. I know I am, and I forget all the changes and stuff.
Phil, are you on the Budget Committee?
It could be Lauren.
I thought it was Lauren.
That was Lauren?
Yeah.
Well, I'll touch base with him.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what's committee?
The Budget.
Uh, what do you say?
Okay, we have the list here. But it'll be on the 23rd of August at 7:00 P.M., Monday night. Very good. Thanks, everyone.
Hey, I have a question for Doug before he goes. The lights on the west end of town, the streetlights, are they going to come back on anytime soon?
I only caught part of that with that, the question about those streetlights on the west side of town.
Yeah.
Are they going to come back on soon?
The QD is working on that, trying to figure out where they popped, what's record popped. I haven't heard back from them yet, but I know we had them on for a couple nights and then that came through and tripped, whatever had tripped or something else. And hopefully they'll be back on sooner than later.
Thank you, Doug.
Anything else to ask of Public Works? If not, we'll go on to resolutions. Did you have anything before that?
No.
Okay, we'll be talking about the Department of Ecology Financial Assistance Agreement. And if you recall, we had a motion on the floor, and then that motion was tabled, but it's still on the floor. So, and that was to pass the proposal for the offer made by Department of Ecology on financial assistance, the $4 million loan. So with that, we
Okay, I have Eric Smith on the line. He can update us on
Very good.
what has occurred since the last council meeting. We were given some direction to find out some more information, and he can update us on that. So go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, can you hear me up there?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, the question was at the last council meeting and at the Public Works Committee was about looking into Ecology's emergency loan assistance program, which provides up to a half a million dollars in loan at a 0% interest rate. We didn't know exactly what the requirements were for that or how Ecology looked at that. So I reached out then after the last council meeting, offered to set up a conference call with him and a couple council members, but they basically came back and said, just directly to me, and said that, or I think myself and Larry were included on email, that this really didn't fall under, in their opinion, the requirements for their emergency funding program. And that was primarily because this has been an issue that's been known about, specifically the Sledge Lagoon, Saltsailing Lagoon. The bubbles have been known about for some time. You know, a facility plan was done too that recommended a solution to address the problem. And they, he mentioned that, you know, Ecology has a funding offer that's in place for this. And so in, in, in their eyes, this wasn't really going to pass muster for an emergency loan assistance through their program. They did, he did say one other, I guess, point of clarification about your loan. And that was that, he said, you know, I understand that the city's trying to, you know, find more grant funding and maybe doesn't want to use $4 million in loan to do the whole project right now. But for instance, if you were to take an emergency loan and just do the screwed breast portion, do something temporary to get, deal with the most immediate need. He said the loan could be, this $4 million loan could be used in that regard as well. He said, you're still agreeing to the $4 million loan package, but you may only do a portion of the work right now. So say you only do a million dollars worth of work. He said you can restructure your loan agreement and reduce the payback period if you want to reduce the interest rate. So if you go down to a, from a 20-year payback down to a five-year term, it would reduce it to like half a percent. So not 0%, like an emergency loan offer would be. But it was another iteration, I guess, on funding that we hadn't considered that he mentioned to us. So otherwise, that was all the new information that I've got about this at this time.
Question, please? Question from Dave Jones, Eric?
Yeah.
Okay. Help me with some numbers, please. So one of the hangups on accepting the $4 million loan is that the interest rate is 1.2% compared to the emergency one where it could be 0%. But we get a $200,000 grant for accepting the loan. Over the course of 20 years, how much interest are we paying on $4 million? Because you told me this the other day. $65,000 about?
I think I wrote the numbers when we were talking about a 0% interest at, for $500,000, but let's just
1.2% over 20 years?
Pull up in a calculator here.
It's less than $200,000, much less.
Over 20 years, 1.2% on 4 million is nominally 500,000 total interest.
500,000 total interest?
Total interest, right.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I was just, I had a number question there. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions?
I have one question, Mayor. If, say later on, when Congress passes, officially passes the stimulus bill, which could be late this fall, December, maybe even the first of the next year, and we're able to get some of the stimulus money to pay off this loan, then would we be able to reduce the $10 fee for each individual who has water through the residence?
Is that a question for me?
Yes.
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 Yeah. So I guess I should make a point of clarification here. The $10 a month was just a nominal calculation where we took the loan repayment for 20 years at 1.2% and divided it out by the number of sewer connections you have right now. And that came out to be around $10, it's like $9.50 a month or something. So that was just what we figured was the worst case if you didn't have any financial capacity with any of your existing rates to cover this. Then a $10 a month add would be the nominal add on top to, to add this loan on top of your current debt services and other expenditures. If you were to get grant money, what would happen is you'd use that grant money for the project and you just wouldn't take the full loan amount. So your rate increase for less loan, less payback would be decreased proportionally. So you could, you could say that if you took, if $4 million equated to a $10 a month increase, $2 million might equate to a $5 a month increase. The one caveat on that is that, and Lauren astutely pointed out, that, you know, in the near term, it would make sense to do, have a financial analysis done by a consultant to do a, do a rate study. And what they would look at there is your current revenue, your expenditures, any debt services going to be retiring in the near term to basically try and find out if potentially your existing rates, which you raised to recently have some capacity to buffer an increase for new funding, or if you need to fully increase your rates, for instance, for, for that calculation that I did. So that would be something that I would recommend. And it could be done with your, you know, the loan package money to hire a financial consultant right off the bat and do a rate study. But yes, you are correct, that if you use grant money to offset loan money, it will, should offset the rate increase proportionally.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions?
And that rate study actually should go, be referred to the Budget Committee as well to take a look at what that's going to cost and if they want to go ahead and put that together. And as Eric said, can be part of the reversal of funding. The funds can be used to reverse that cost from the DOE loan.
Yeah, it wasn't specifically spelled out in our funding package that you were going to do a rate study as was funded. But it's, it's part of, it's a normal thing. I think it's, it's, there's not, Ecology would not have any issue with you funding your rate study out of the funding package. So I'm very confident that that could be done with reversible funds.
How long ago did we have a rate study done?
I don't remember when we did.
Quite a while back. Okay, that's what it's called. Well, council, there's a situation here. We have a motion on the table. It was, it was tabled. Do we want to?
I'll just kind of reiterate why I made that motion in the first place and, you know, right here is the plan. As proposed by the marketing team we hired, RH2. It's obviously signed off on by the Department of Ecology because they want to loan us the money to do this plan. They're giving us a grant of $200,000, you know, to go forward with this now. To me, it's a, you know, it's the bird in the hand. We've got the bird in the hand right here. We know this stuff all needs done. You know, the lagoon is, needs done right now, you know, as soon as possible. We've got to be on board with the Department of Ecology to avoid problems, you know? Fines could kill us if we don't get on board and do the right thing here. It's not just the lagoon either, you know? It's the grid removal system. Everything in this plan is what needs done, you know? It, you know, Eric, is this still the recommended plan?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's why, that's what I'm going to vote for.
So what do we, we say either yes or no now? Is that? I think you need to go ahead.
The time, the time to accept this loan is now, isn't it? How much more time we have?
It is now because, the thing is, if, I thought a lot about this.
Yeah.
Because I know there was a reluctance to take a loan, but at the same time, if we didn't take it and then we didn't get the funding, we would really be in a bad spot.
Exactly.
We wouldn't have anything. This way
We got to get this out of the way.
If we get extra money, it'll help to relieve the debt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why has this been so long? I mean, why, 19 years you guys, Andy said you guys have been pushing us around for 19 years?
I don't know about 19 years, but I know since I've been on here where there's been issues, but we always talked about doing updates to the treatment plant. So you could say, the last couple of years, I know we've had issues.
You could say why, and why, all you want, but that doesn't do anything to solve the problem that we're faced with.
Exactly.
But I think, I think we need to, to figure out what the water, how much the water bill is going to go around for the community too, though. I mean, how much is going to go up?
Well
I think that's a big thing for
I mean, I agree with that, but at the same time, we're, we've already pushed this out another month and a half. We can't keep pushing this out further.
Well, we got a pretty good idea. I mean, Eric kind of mapped it out for us.
Yeah.
You know, $9, $10.
$9.50.
Maybe there's things we can do in the meantime to make that less. If we hustle with grants and everything, I don't know. But this is the bird in the hand we have right now. This is the hand we're dealt.
Yep.
This is the hand we have to take care of.
So I think you should, if you're going to make a motion, the motion would be to adopt, authorize the mayor to execute us.
Right, like we started before.
Yeah.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Does it bring up the old motion?
Yeah.
Or does it, do we have to make a new motion?
That was on the, that was, there was a motion on the floor.
And then it was tabled.
They made a motion to table the motion, so the, that first motion's still on the floor.
Okay, so we are first and second to approve and pass Resolution 719.
Right.
Which is accepting the award of a $4 million loan and the $205,500 forgiveness principal for design and construction of the items listed in the scope of work on the agreement with the Department of Ecology.
And with that, we would be following instructions from the council as far as to go ahead with this move. Do we need to redo the motion or can we?
They just need to vote now.
Okay, we just need to vote on what's existing, whether we accept to do the loan or not.
The final thing I'll say about it is, the professionals that made up this plan, they've signed off on it. They know it's the best thing to do. All of our city workers know it's the best thing to do. So it's our obligation to make it happen.
So you say all in favor? Is that what you need to?
That's, that's, if there's no more discussion or questions, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor of accepting this $4 million emergency financial assistance agreement from Department of Ecology?
No, not emergency.
Not emergency, yeah. We weren't eligible for it, they said.
Oh, no, it said Department, I was misread the title up there. But if we have a motion to accept that proposal from the Department of Ecology, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
They all agree.
Motion is unanimous. Great job, folks. Great job. I think it's the most prudent path for us to follow on this matter. Appreciate everybody's cooperation and great job, Dave.
Thank you.
Rebuilding the fire. Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is has to do with the Bible Baptist Church rezone proposal, and Larry will present the details on that. And thank you, Eric Smith, for a great job.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, I'm going to make this really simple. The Bible Baptist Church and the developer, Nam Sun, wish to remove three, three single wide bubble homes on the backside of the Bible Baptist Church property, which has actually already happened. And they would like to replace it with three new duplex units, or a total of six, six additional units there on that property. The, if you look at page five after the agenda bill, it has the title of Bible Baptist Church rezone, you'll see that this property is right at the edge of existing R2 zoning. And that's that bold red line that goes from north to south. And then a shaded diagonal red hatching is what would be changed from general commercial C2 to two-family residential R2. Then if you look at page number seven, which is a couple more, you'll see that basically the C2 zoning, the application follows C2 zoning and designates that in its C2 zone, if you're using it for residential use, it must comply with the R3 development standards. And R3 development standards require a lot to be a minimum of 7,500 square feet. In this case, they're requesting it to 6,000, which is allowed in an R2. So all we're doing is changing the zone from our, C2 to R2.
R2.
From general commercial to two-family residential. I think it'll be a great addition and improvement to our community. And I would recommend that we adopt the ordinance number
Everybody goes wrong.
1508 is the ordinance number?
1508?
Oh, there it is, in the bottom of the motion. Where did it serve, 1508? So we would recommend that the council adopt an ordinance to accept the planning commission findings attached and to change the zoning from C2 to R2 and waive the second reading.
Are there comments or questions on this?
We need to, so moved, so.
That'd be fine.
Yeah, so moved, so.
Okay. It's been, I have a second.
One second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 1508 by advocate Bible Baptist Church to rezone from general commercial C2 to two-family residential R2, waiving the second reading. If there's not questions or discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm not sure I heard all the votes, but I'm calling it as unanimous. Did we have a may vote? I don't think we did.
There was an aye for it.
Okay. Thanks, Phil. So the motion passes unanimously. This would be quite an improvement in this part of town.
Exactly.
Exactly.
The next item on the agenda is a report of officers and city administration. We'll begin with Larry.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that we're meeting with the Budget Committee on the twenty-third. And the items that we talked about addressing would be this discussion about whether or not to continue with the flower, flower maintenance and order seeds, talk about rate study, talk about sewer rates, and to report back to council on some of that discussion. And I wanted to see, is Dustin still on, and does he have anything to report?
I don't see him.
Is Dustin Conroy?
No, that's Phil, and that's Doug.
Okay, I guess we're good.
Sure, Doug. Any questions or comments for Larry? If not, we'll...
Well, maybe I do, I'd be fine.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Econe Park, is there anything new on that? Are we gonna be able to do something this fall?
Oh, Econe Park. That's a good question.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that.
That's okay, I just thought I'd bring it up. We've got some time left, so I just thought I...
It would probably, we'll wait till it gets a little cooler.
Oh, yes, yes.
Because the outside work, such as the asphalt holes, and going up to the mountains, those are best done when it's warmer outside. So, we'll talk about it some more and see if we can come up with some plans.
Sounds good.
Very good, very good. We'll go on with counsel reports. We'll begin with Andy.
I got two things for Jay, actually. First thing is, you were in your last meeting, but prior to that, we felt there was a presence of police around. They go around, and it was appreciated by all the people that attended. Second thing is to relay on to all the officers how much they are appreciated here in town. I spoke to a number of them, and with all the new laws and all the things going on in our country, I just think they need to know that, I think I can probably speak for all of us, that they are very much appreciated.
Sure. I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Good.
Well, previously, we were talking about the flowers. Now, this is just my personal opinion. I know it's costly to have the flowers, but a lot of work has been done to keep them going. They do a good job, and I personally would like to make the recommendation to the Budget Committee that really seriously look at keeping the flowers. That's my, that's my opinion. And that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Lauren?
No, Phil.
Okay, Phil?
I don't have anything.
Okay, we'll go to Ellie.
I don't have anything.
Dave?
Thank you. Hey, I was just gonna say, I'm really looking forward to the fair this year. You know, we missed on it last year, and just thanks to everybody who worked so hard to make that happen, and really looking forward to that. That's all I had.
Very good.
Thank you.
Great weather for a fair.
Yes.
Darling?
No, I don't have anything.
My goodness, what a quiet group.
I know, right? Give me a minute.
I have a little bit, but I have a feeling it's already been responded to. We got a very nice card from the, it's the community church at, let me make sure I got the right community.
Centerville.
Centerville.
Centerville, yes. And the prayer leader was Guy Terrio, who used to serve here as a city council member. But they've been praying for the city council and the work that you do. Both the recognition of the importance of your work, and also the hope that you do well in it. And I think by the speed that you went through two very crucial decisions, you did great. So, that's it, and I'll pass it around to anybody who wants to see it. But I thought it was very thoughtful for the, for the group in Centerville to talk about the fact that they were thinking of the things that the city council is trying to do to get city business carried out. With that, we'll go to public comment. Anyone on the line or here for a public comment? You guys are on a roll. If there are no public comments, then we need a motion to close the meeting.
So, who?
Second.
It's been moved and signed into adjourned city council for August 16th. And our next meeting will be September 7, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.